All right, good evening. And thank you all so much for being here. I want to appreciate those of you who are here in person, as well as those who are a part of our online audience this evening. We want to welcome you to the District 3 School Board Candidate Forum. And as a reminder, District 3 represents schools in the South Side and San Marco areas of Jacksonville. We really appreciate you for spending your evening with us and demonstrating your commitment to public education and to our city. My name is Rachel Tutwiler-Fortune, and I am the President of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund. I'm pleased to co-moderate the School Board Candidate Forums this year with my colleague Leafric Thomas, who serves as JPEF's manager for data and policy. He played a leading role in organizing the 2024 forums. JPEF is an independent, high-capacity local education fund with the mission of activating community support, connecting partners, and advancing effective ideas for the success of all students. Our work is grounded in research and best practice. We also actively seek out input from parents, educators, students, and community leaders. The 2024 School Board Forums are being put on by a coalition of nonpartisan 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, so that voters hear directly from those seeking office. We want to recognize and thank our forum partners, so if we could have forum partners stand as we recognize you. We have the Duval County Council of PTA. I think some are on post, literally helping with the event as we speak. We have the Jacksonville Civic Council. Give them my hand. The Jacksonville Public Education Fund. The Jacksonville Tributary. The NAACP Jacksonville Chapter. And 904. We also want to thank our hosting partner. We're here at the Jesse Ball DePonte Center this evening. Give it up for the Jesse. Your engagement matters, so we're just extremely grateful that you have taken time out of your busy schedules to be here tonight. While both candidates did confirm their attendance, unfortunately, Ms. Nathanson informed us yesterday that she would no longer be able to make it. So on tonight, we will have the ability to hear solely from the incumbent, that is, School Board member Cindy Pearson. And we appreciate you for taking time to be with us this evening. All right, thank you all. And before we begin, I just want to go over our ground rules for this evening. For the candidates, we will be starting each of these forums with brief introductions. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves during each forum. We'll do that alphabetically. And then we'll transition to the question portion of the evening. School Board members will then, and candidates will then have an opportunity to share their remarks. They'll have 90 seconds to answer each question. That's about a minute and a half for each. And to help keep us on track this evening, during both the introduction and Q&amp;A portion of the program, my colleague Connor will put up a yellow warning card when you have 15 seconds left for your introduction or your response. And he will put up a red warning card to please end your answer when your time is over. We will politely move on. We want to get to as many questions as possible, and so we ask you to just keep in mind those time constraints and honor those time limits. Our questions have been sourced in collaboration between JPEF staff with some additions from our organizational partners. We will also take some questions from those attending in person and virtually. So if you're joining us on Zoom, please submit your questions using the Q&amp;A section. If you're on Facebook, please use the chat function to share your question. And in the room here at the Jesse, please use the question card that was at your seat when you arrived. I do want to make mention of the fact that in addition to that question card, you also have two questionnaires that both candidates submitted prior to tonight's event, because we wanted you to have the benefit of those responses as well, so that you would have an opportunity to hear some of the information that's been provided from both candidates. So that information is available to you all. And for those who are joining us online, it can also be found on our website at www.jaxpeff.org. We're going to do our best this evening to get through as many questions as possible, but please know with such a well-attended event, we unfortunately will not be able to get to all questions. We will definitely make sure that we have the opportunity to share this forum. We're going to be sharing it live on Facebook, so we ask people to go and find us on Facebook, Jacksonville Public Education Fund. The forum is actually live there even as we speak. And we want to ensure that as many people as possible have the opportunity to cast an informed vote. So please share this forum with your networks. We want to invite you to go ahead and share it live even now if you have that ability. At the end of the forum, our candidates will have an opportunity to speak for two minutes to provide closing remarks. Some topics on the agenda to look out for this evening include school closures, the role of the school board, equitable education, teacher recruitment and retention, and parent and caregiver engagement. We also want to remind you of some important election information before we begin. The primary election will be held on Tuesday, August 20, with early voting happening from August 5th through the 18th. You still have time to sign up for a mail-in ballot if you wish to do so. If no school board candidate receives more than 50% of the vote during a primary, there will be a runoff between the top two candidates in November. Now, of note, that opportunity is only
All right, good evening. And thank you all so much for being here. I want to appreciate those of you who are here in person, as well as those who are a part of our online audience this evening. We want to welcome you to the District Three School Board Candidate Forum. And as a reminder, District Three represents schools in the South Side and San Marco areas of Jacksonville. We really appreciate you for spending your evening with us and demonstrating your commitment to public education and to our city. My name is Rachel Tutwiler-Fortun, and I am the President of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund. I'm pleased to co-moderate the School Board Candidate Forums this year with my colleague Leafric Thomas, who serves as JPEF's manager for data and policy. He played a leading role in organizing the 2024 forums. JPEF is an independent, high-capacity local education fund with the mission of activating community support, connecting partners, and advancing effective ideas for the success of all students. Our work is grounded in research and best practice. We also actively seek out input from parents, educators, students, and community leaders. The 2024 School Board Forums are being put on by a coalition of nonpartisan 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations so that voters hear directly from those seeking office. We want to recognize and thank our forum partners, so if we could have forum partners stand as we recognize you. We have the Duval County Council of PTA. I think some are on post, literally helping with the event as we speak. We have the Jacksonville Civic Council. Give them my hand. The Jacksonville Public Education Fund. The Jacksonville Tributary. The NAACP Jacksonville Chapter. And 904. We also want to thank our hosting partner. We're here at the Jesse Ball DePonte Center this evening. Give it up for the Jesse. Your engagement matters, so we're just extremely grateful that you have taken time out of your busy schedules to be here tonight. While both candidates did confirm their attendance, unfortunately Ms. Nathanson informed us yesterday that she would no longer be able to make it. So on tonight, we will have the ability to hear solely from the incumbent, that is School Board Member Cindy Pearson. And we appreciate you for taking time to be with us this evening. All right. Thank you all. And before we begin, I just want to go over our ground rules for this evening. For the candidates, we will be starting each of these forums with brief introductions. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves during each forum. We'll do that alphabetically. And then we'll transition to the question portion of the evening. School Board members will then, and candidates will then have an opportunity to share their remarks. They'll have 90 seconds to answer each question. That's about a minute and a half for each. And to help keep us on track this evening, during both the introduction and Q&amp;A portion of the program, my colleague Connor will put up a yellow warning card when you have 15 seconds left for your introduction or your response. And he will put up a red warning card to please end your answer. When your time is over, we will politely move on. We want to get to as many questions as possible, and so we ask you to just keep in mind those time constraints and honor those time limits. Our questions have been sourced in collaboration between JPEF staff with some additions from our organizational partners. We will also take some questions from those attending in person and virtually. So if you're joining us on Zoom, please submit your questions using the Q&amp;A section. If you're on Facebook, please use the chat function to share your question. And in the room here at the Jesse, please use the question card that was at your seat when you arrived. I do want to make mention of the fact that in addition to that question card, you also have two questionnaires that both candidates submitted prior to tonight's event because we wanted you to have the benefit of those responses as well, so that you would have an opportunity to hear some of the information that's been provided from both candidates. So that information is available to you all. And for those who are joining us online, it can also be found on our website at www.jaxpeff.org. We're going to do our best this evening to get through as many questions as possible, but please know with such a well-attended event, we unfortunately will not be able to get to all questions. We will definitely make sure that we have the opportunity to share this forum. We're going to be sharing it live on Facebook, so we ask people to go and find us on Facebook, Jacksonville Public Education Fund. The forum is actually live there even as we speak, and we want to ensure that as many people as possible have the opportunity to cast an informed vote. So please share this forum with your networks. We want to invite you to go ahead and share it live even now if you have that ability. At the end of the forum, our candidates will have an opportunity to speak for two minutes to provide closing remarks. Some topics on the agenda to look out for this evening include school closures, the role of the school board, equitable education, teacher recruitment and retention, and parent and caregiver engagement. We also want to remind you of some important election information before we begin. The primary election will be held on Tuesday, August 20, with early voting happening from August 5 through the 18. You still have time to sign up for a mail-in ballot if you wish to do so. If no school board candidate receives more than 50% of the vote during a primary, there will be a runoff between the top two candidates in November. Now, of note, that opportunity is only applicable to District Five this year because that is the only race that has three candidates. And the general election is going to be held November 5 with early voting happening from October 21 through November 3. Before we dive in, I want to thank our candidate for participating this evening, Board Member Pearson, and also thank Ms. Nathanson for running for office. School Board elections provide the community an important opportunity to engage with the public education system, and we are really grateful that you've taken time tonight to speak directly to the voters, and we're really appreciative of your interest in public service.
As we prepare to delve into the questions and hear from candidates, we also want to ensure the community understands the role of the school board. School Board sets policies that govern our schools, such as district's code of conduct. The school board is also tasked with adopting policies to comply with education-related legislation, like those that may come down the pipeline from federal and state governments. The school board is also responsible for the budget of the school district. Although the state of Florida has a big say in the funding districts receive, the school board determines how a lot of these education dollars are allocated within the district. The school board also approves curriculums for all schools. Therefore, they are directly responsible for how our future accountants learn math, how our future surgeons start out in science, and how our future writers learn nuances of language. Finally, the school board oversees facility issues. It is the responsibility of the school board to approve or deny changes in school academic programs, also magnet programs, and which schools should remain open or closed down.
So we're going to go ahead and get started. And Board Member Pearson, we're going to now turn to your introduction, so if you could please introduce yourself to forum attendees.
It's a little bit interesting to introduce myself to a room of people that I recognize, probably 90, more than 90% of the people in this room. Thank you so much for coming out to support. And I'm looking around and I'm seeing the last, let's see, it's 24, 13 years of our second, my second time in Jacksonville. And then I was born here and went to school here K through 12 and left for college. And so I'm seeing people from all these different phases of life, which speaks to the kind of person that I am. I'm deeply rooted in the community. I am a mom of three students who went to DCPS K, well, not K, 2 through 12, 1 through 12, and K through 12. And, oh, no, K through, going to be a junior. I elevated her. But, and then I'm seeing students from student government and teachers and principals from schools and people that I run with, and neighbors and new people that I've met in the course of the campaign, and parent advocates and nonprofit partners, and people that we work side by side with doing the best that we can for our students in Duval County Public Schools. And so that is kind of the kind of person I've been. I started as a parent volunteer, helping with 501(c)(3) at the elementary school, and PTA, and SAC, and then went on to help start one at a middle school, and then start one at a high school to bridge funding gaps, and have been a big cheerleader for the schools in my neighborhood. And so when I decide, when I kind of started looking around, I thought, you know, I would like to, I would like to do more of that. That's why I ran for school board in 2020, and that's why I'm running for school board reelection in 2024, to keep supporting our students, our families, and our staff.
Thank you for that. So let's now turn to some questions. We're going to start with the challenge that has activated our community in a major way, and that's the recent master's facility plan proposals and school closure recommendations. So as we sure you know, as you've been involved, the districts surpassed a sales tax a couple of years ago to help renovate and rebuild a number of school facilities. At the same time, the cost of construction has skyrocketed, and enrollment has declined more than previously expected, meaning the district is not able to build everything that was promised in the sales tax campaign, and has begun to float the idea of potential school closures instead. Can you describe how you, in partnership with the now-new superintendent and the board, would evaluate the district's facility plan, given the challenges and circumstances, and ensure thoughtful use of the district's capital and sales tax funds while addressing the community's growing concerns?
Absolutely. That's the work that I've been involved in, well, most of the last year and a half. But we're in the middle of that process right now. We had seven community forums in each of the school districts. We have appointed citizens to be on a focus group. They have met. Staff is working on their, kind of collating their input. And then we will have another set on July 31 and August 1, where that presentation goes back to the focus group. And then that will come to the board, and we will start to talk about it. But all along, I've been asking for a baseline for us to make the decisions. When we were presented with a revised plan on March 11, I was quite irritated that that plan named schools and created a de facto list of schools that were projected to be closed, and I disagreed with a number of those choices, especially some of the ones in District Three. And so all along, I've been asking for a baseline for how we're making the decision to make, to be transparent, to make it clear to the community, and then a rubric so that we could decide how to remove schools from a potential list or not. And so that's the process that we're in right now, working with the community to do that. Moving forward, we will have difficult decisions to make. I do believe that we are going to have to close and consolidate some schools, but we want to do it in a way that is thoughtful to the community and thoughtful to our students and thoughtful to our teachers.
So amazing that you brought that up, because in the event that schools do close, then they still may face some closures. What will your specific approach be to your community that will help guide them in understanding the decision made by the district?
So within board policy, we have policies. If we are going to re-boundary, there is a community engagement process. If we're going to change a program at a school, there's a community engagement process. And so we would start with the community engagement process to be very, communicate clearly to the community what's going to happen and get their input on it. And but then also, there's some key questions to ask. And so I've already been talking with some teachers who are, who are at, working at schools that are on a projected list. They want to know if they're going to have a job. They want to know if they're going to be able to finish out their career in DCPS. A lot of families are concerned about class size. If schools are consolidated, does that mean that the class sizes are going to be larger? A lot of community members want to know what's going to happen to the property or what's going to happen to the building. Am I going to end up with multifamily in the middle of my neighborhood? And so those are all very important questions to address and to ask with the community. But we also need to talk about programs in our schools, and do we have the right programs and the right schools? Is there something that we can do to turn, turn this around and make our schools more attractive to the community, to draw people back into DCPS?
Thank you so much. This next question comes to us from our partners at the Jacksonville Civic Council. We're living through a defining moment where the future of public schools and the future of public education is being shaped for generations to come. The Civic Council launched a strategic plan that, for education, emphasizes a vision in which we retain and attract new talent to Jacksonville to access our best-in-class education. Two pillars of that plan focus on inspiration, inspiring people to act with a vision and a story of greater Jacksonville, and two, preparation, building a system of education that produces the workforce of tomorrow. Let's take those goals one at a time. For inspiration, what education systems, school districts across the nation, for example, would you consider to be world-class and why? And what might we do in Duval County to move our system in that direction? We'd like to know what initiatives you may prioritize to enhance our public education system.
Awesome. So, well, when you look at the Big Seven, which are the seven largest school districts in the state of Florida, Miami Dade comes out at the top of the Big Seven consistently. And I've been asking, why does Miami Dade keep kicking our tails? And so that is a question that I keep asking. They're doing, they're kicking our tails when it comes to literacy scores. And if you look at the top schools in the state, they have many of the top schools in the state. So interestingly enough, we have a new superintendent, and he has hired a new chief of staff. His chief of staff spent a lot of his career in Miami Dade. He's only on his second day on the job, so I haven't hit him up yet. But I'm really looking forward to talking with him. We also, I have a constituent in my, who lives in the district, who is a former Miami Dade staff member, and I've already talked with her quite a bit. The second would be Polk County, which is not one of the Big Seven. However, Polk County has started looking at how to offer à la carte systems. So we're in this high-choice situation, right? And we have parents who can get scholarships to homeschool through the PEP program. We also have parents who do home education. We need to figure out how to tap into that. And I already had a parent talk to me about it on Friday. So Polk County started looking at that, and I would like to dig into what they're doing and see what we can do.
Thank you so much. And now on to that other goal of preparation. What are the top two or three skills we need to be teaching our kids so they're ready to join the workforce of the future? And as a school board member, what policies will you put in place to assure students reach those skill sets?
Awesome. Thank you. So I happen to be on the Prepare Working Group. The Civic Council has asked some folks from the community to join them, and so this is the working group that I'm on. I think the first is, we would all agree that it's, it's the basics of education. We want our students to have a high level of literacy. We want our students to be able to read, comprehend, and communicate. We want our students to be able to do the math skills that they need to function in jobs. And I think we could broaden maybe what some of those math skills are, depending on where our students are going. And then we want them to be knowledgeable and be able to make connections between what's happened in history, what's going on now. We want them to have an understanding of science and cultural issues and current events issues. So the basics would be one. The second is what our group is working on, which is technology and having a more technology-literate workforce. And so the graduates coming out to be more technologically literate, and we're actually working on a plan right now for that. The third would be the soft skills, which is something that we have done through Duval County Public Schools. We put it in our strategic plan. We have the Duval Ready Diploma, and those, we surveyed our businesses to see what graduates were missing, communication skills showing up on time, working together, problem-solving, conflict resolution, those types of issues.
Thank you. Thank you. So we know that equality in education means providing same resources for everyone, whereas equity requires us to take into account each student's individual needs and provide tailored support accordingly. Regardless of the district, the majority of Duval County Public Schools, over 50%, serve students who are racially diverse and are labeled as economically disadvantaged. How do you plan to equitably support all students as a school board member for the entire county?
Awesome. And that's so true, that while I represent District Three, I make decisions that affect a system of schools that reflect a very large county. So one of the things I would say is, is we suffer with inconsistency in our school system. And so when we talk about neighborhood schools, you can see a disparity from school to school in the physical plant of the school and the resources that are offered. And so that was the goal of the bold plan, is to bring our facilities up to a level where they're consistent. We really need to invest in neighborhood schools and make sure that every family has a system of schools, elementary, middle, high school, that they feel like is a good first choice for them. And if they want to make another choice, that's great. But we, they shouldn't look at their neighborhood school and go, that's not an option for me. The second thing I have forgotten, what that is, can you refresh me with the question?
How do you?
Oh, root issues. Got it. Okay. So knowing what the root issues are of the behaviors, of the, of the scores that we see, one of the things that I've learned in the last four years is that there's trauma in homes, and there are some, some really severe situations in our students' lives. And so supporting students with mental health counseling, with trauma-informed practices, with testing for, for learning differences, for just getting to the root cause, figuring out the absentee issue, I'll, I'll address these in another question.
All right. The next two questions are about challenges that are not specific to Duval County. They represent nationwide issues that Duval County Public Schools is working with many partners to address as we speak. In Duval County, the percentage of third graders passing the Florida State Assessment in reading hasn't exceeded 52% in the last 10 years of available data. What are your thoughts on how to approach this historic challenge?
Well, it is, and I would say, one, we made progress this year, so I want to celebrate that, that we did improve in our reading scores among all grade levels. And so I do want to celebrate that and also say we're not where we need to be. So in our strategic plan that I was part of putting together in 2020, we have a goal of having 60%, being at 60% by 2026. And that is now our new superintendent's goal, and he's going to be evaluated on that. So that's something that he, he knows that he needs to be working on. I'm sorry, I've forgotten the question again.
No, that was it. Just how to approach the literacy challenges.
Get going.
That's right. And so the next question is, in Duval County, the number of students who are considered chronically absent, missing four weeks of school, has nearly doubled to 27% from where it was the year before COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic, and that was 15.6%. What role do you see the school board playing in getting students to school?
Right. So I'm part of a task force. You'll hear this. I'm part of several task forces. But I'm part of a task force on absenteeism. And it was pulled together by the City of Jacksonville, by Duval County Public Schools, and by Kids Hope Alliance, and some of our other partners. And so we've had, we've met twice. We've talked about root causes for absenteeism. We've talked about how to address those, and we've kind of talked about who owns what. And that's one of the things that, that I've kind of come to say a bit in my time on the school board, is one of the, one of the issues is we just all need to own our stuff, right? So the stuff that is part of Duval County that we can change, we need to be working on that. The stuff that's part of the community, the City of Jacksonville needs to own their stuff. Nonprofits, where they can help, own, you know, own their stuff. Individual families, where there are issues there, they need to own their stuff. And it's not going to get better until we can all just kind of identify and own our own stuff, and then find the resources to start making a difference. But there is going to be something coming up in the next couple of weeks, which is a citywide campaign with the launch of school, every student, every day, and that we, that we, every student counts, and we, and we want you to be there.
Awesome. Thank you. So as we reach this pivotal, pivotal moment in education, leadership and accountability is at the forefront, especially with policies coming down from Tallahassee. So in the event that you are reelected, at a time when a superintendent has just assumed leadership responsibilities as DCPS, the superintendent is a critical and the only position that reports to the school board. So tell us about how you would approach building an effective and collaborative relationship with the new superintendent, balancing accountability and support to ensure success in advancing DCPS's mission.
Thank you. And I will correct you slightly. The school board hires two positions, the superintendent and the internal board auditor. So we actually have two that we supervise. But so we have already started meeting with Dr. Bernier. His practice is to meet with school board members every other week. So I have a standing appointment with him at 10 o'clock on Mondays. So I've had an hour-long meeting with him, and then a 30-minute meeting with him yesterday. And the agenda is what's on my mind and what am I seeing? And then he briefs me on what's going on. So I think that open line of communication is really important, and I appreciate that that's his practice. And then working with staff, working with community members, one of the things that I have been doing a lot recently is walking in neighborhoods and talking with people in the community. And I have been able to communicate some stories and some concerns that I'm hearing from community members back to staff so that they can address them. And, but I think also the strategic plan that we have, making sure that we're all on board, kind of all rowing in the same direction, will also be an important part of that. And that really should be guiding what we do is our strategic plan.
Thank you. And so moving forward, how do you envision, with things coming down from Tallahassee, how do you envision continuously working with legislators, government officials, nonprofit organizations, and business leaders to enhance educational opportunities given to, given the unique challenges and opportunities facing public education today?
Yes. And it's not going to get better until we can all just kind of identify and own our own stuff and then find the resources to start making a difference. But there is going to be something coming up in the next couple of weeks, which is a citywide campaign with the launch of school, every student, every day, and that we that we, every student counts, and we and we want you to be there.
Awesome. Thank you. So as we reach this pivotal pivotal moment in education, leadership and accountability is at the forefront, especially with policies coming down from Tallahassee. So in the event that you are reelected, at a time when a superintendent has just assumed leadership responsibility as DCPS, the superintendent is a critical and the only position that reports to the school board. So tell us about how you would approach building an effective and collaborative collaborative relationship with the new superintendent, balancing accountability and support to ensure success in advancing DCPS's mission.
Thank you. And I will correct you slightly. The school board hires two positions, the superintendent and the internal board auditor. So we actually have two that we supervise, but. So we have already started meeting with Dr. Bernier. His practice is to meet with school board members every other week, so I have a standing appointment with him at 10 o'clock on Mondays. So I've had an hour-long meeting with him and then a 30-minute meeting with him yesterday. And the the agenda is what's on my mind and what am I seeing? And then he briefs me on what's going on. So I think that open line of communication is really important, and I appreciate that that's his practice. And then working with staff, working with community members. One of the things that I have been doing a lot recently is walking in neighborhoods and talking with people in the community. And I have been able to communicate some stories and some concerns that I'm hearing from community members back to staff so that they can address them. And but I think also the strategic plan that we have, making sure that we're all on board, kind of all rowing in the same direction, will also be an important part of that. And that really should be guiding what we do is our strategic plan.
Thank you. And so moving forward, how do you envision with things coming down from Tallahassee, how do you envision continuously working with legislators, government officials, nonprofit organizations, and business leaders to enhance educational opportunities given to, given the unique challenges and opportunities facing public education today?
Yes. So this is going to sound like the same thing, but I happen to be. I have been involved with Florida School Board Association, and I've been our legislative liaison for the past two or three years, but now I am the vice chair of the Legislative Committee. So I get to help put together the legislative agenda for Florida School Board Association. So 67 counties, we would all be representing that set of concerns. And then we would come back to Duval, and as I call it, Duvalize it, to maybe take something off or put something on. So we would be a united public education voice for those. And then we reach out to our partners in PTSA and other partners and and try to see if others will join us in some of those items where we have alignment. So the advocacy is part of it. The building relationships with with the Duval delegation, with committee chairs, with others who are decision-makers. I am also part of COSPA, which is the Consortium of State School Board Associations. And last year I went to Washington DC with COSPA and advocated for federal issues with school board members from around the country. And so pending reelection, I'll be doing that again this year. And then I try really hard to work with my counterpart on the city, my counterparts on the city council. Each school board district is two city council districts. It's four and five. I'm three. They're four and five, and then I have at-large members. So I try to work closely with them, as I say, for our for the good of our shared constituents.
Right. Thank you. So moving forward, what is your perspective on school choice? And the use of publicly funded vouchers? How should the school board work with legislation to provide support and accountability to all schools receiving public funds?
Okay. Well, isn't this a hot-button issue? So it is what it is. We have a statewide system of school choice that's decided by our legislature and signed into law by our governor. I do think that parents should do what they need to do for their kids. And in our family, we have gone to our neighborhood school, and we have gone to a magnet school for middle school and a magnet school for high school. Those were previously our neighborhood schools. So we made those choices as a family. We chose to be, we chose to make public school our school choice. And I think that's an important message that I've talked with parent advocates about, but an important message that we can that we can have in our county is that public, being a part of public education is a school choice. But as far as what goes on outside of the DCPS boundaries, I have tried to work with the charter schools. I think I have nine charter schools in my district, and I've tried to work with them, be available to them, and and read to their students or speak at their graduation, whatever I'm asked to do. As far as legislation goes, we can lobby and we can try to get small changes. I don't think we're going to get large changes at this point, but we can try to make small, meaningful changes. There was a set of deregulation bills last session. I've heard there's going to be another set of deregulation bills. We can be smart about what we ask for. And then going back to own our stuff, we own our stuff. So with what's what's up to us, we need to be competing for students. And that was my question to the semifinalist, is Florida's wide open for choice. How are you going to compete for students?
And with that being said, how would you advocate for greater fiscal transparency from charter schools regarding the use of sales tax funds? And what measures would you support to ensure all types of schools, whether that be traditional public, charter, and private, report student outcomes effectively to assure parents in the community of the quality of education children are receiving?
Great. We've asked that question through FSBA, and the answer we got was the deregulation bills. So instead of putting restrictions on private or homeschool or charter, they have offered to take some restrictions away from public schools. So that is that is the course that's happening. If I were to be able to do what I think we should do, I would love to see greater transparency, and I'll give you an example of that with the vouchers. Step Up for Students is the is the one of the organizers, administrators of it, and then AAA is the other. Three years ago, when DCPS was in charge of enrolling students in the scholarship program, we had a list of who who was enrolled, and we could compare that list with who was in our schools, and we were able to identify $10 million of students who were dual-enrolled. And we were able to lobby the state and say, hey, 10 million's a lot of money, and and we would like to have that back. And they countered with four. It was what they were willing to give us. Six million dollar cut. However, now that Step Up for Students is the one who's the authorizer and enrolling, we don't even have a list to compare to. So as a board member, trying to make budget decisions, I don't have good information to know how many people are enrolled in this program, which schools they're enrolled in. And there are a lot of other sticky issues, but I'm out of time.
Awesome. So this next question comes to us from our partners at the Duval County Council PTAs. Some candidates run for school board with limited hands-on experience in our schools, whether as a parent, volunteer, teacher, or another role. Can you tell us specifically what schools in DCPS you've worked with or in, and what your role, or what role you were in, excuse me, and what impact you made, and how you were affected by that experience?
Okay, I'm going to talk fast because there's a lot. Hendrix Avenue Elementary helps revive Friends of Hendrix. PTA SAC member raised tens of thousands of dollars, probably hundreds, maybe over 100,000, and also put in a ton of sweat equity work hours. Landon, Julia Landon Middle School, started a 501(c)(3) with a friend who's in the audience to help revive the media center there. And we were raising about 15,000 a year for that project, and then handed it over to other parents, and then set my site, oh, also was on SAC and PTA. And then Wolfson High School was kind of the tip of the spear on that one. Seeing that transition and started Friends of Hendrix, did a bunch of jobs with that, wrote a lot of articles for the resident, and helped engage alumni, raised money. And then also PTA, because there was none, so we were all working together, and SAC at that school. Since I've been on the board, I've shed all of those responsibilities, except for helping to mentor the student government at Wolfson High School, which I absolutely love, because I was student president in 1988 at Wolfson High School, student body president. So, oh, I want more time. And so I'm just going to ignore. And then since I've been on the board, I have made it a practice to visit each of my schools three times a year. The first, I don't even know if y'all know this, the first visit I make is to sit on your campus before school starts and to pray peace over your campus before you start, or I participate in your prayer walks if you invite me to do that. The second visit is on the first week of school. I just drop in with some chocolate and my cell phone number and and say, hey, I'm with you. And then the third is a one-hour meeting with the principal to hear whatever they want to talk to me about and to talk about marketing and recruiting students to their schools. I go to homecoming at every high school, but I want to keep going.
I'm sorry, we got to move on. I apologize. But we do have to move on, because we want to make sure we get to as many questions as possible tonight. But thank you for that response. I do want to remind the audience, if you have questions, please go ahead and take a moment to begin filling out those question cards that are at your seats. We are moving into the last few of our questions that were prepared before the event tonight. But our next question does come to us from the NAACP. What does community engagement mean to you and why is it important? How would you achieve this goal as a board member for your district? Please share what type of activities you will implement to keep your constituents knowledgeable of the DCPS policies, programs, goals?
Sure. Well, to me, community engagement is showing up. So, and I am a board member with a reputation of showing up. I show up on the 22 schools, the campuses of the 22 schools in my district. I show up for our not-for-profit partners. I come to their events. I come to their graduations. I show up at CPAC meetings, although mine's kind of weird because I don't fit in one very easily. I obviously I show up for groundbreakings and different events that we have through DCPS. I show up at the PTA meetings and give a greeting and a welcome and an update on that. So wherever I'm invited, I show up. I've been to NAACP Education Committee meetings. So whenever I'm invited, I really do try to show up. And then I take the information that I receive and I try to see if we need to make adjustments in policy, or it helps me to be better informed when I'm voting on the budget. Or I try to connect people. I love to connect people, a little conjunction junction, what's your function? And so when I learn about something, that especially something that I'm excited about, then I tell other people about it so that they know, to the point where I'm trying to recruit my own child to be part of one of our not-for-profits and another child who did a program this summer with another not-for-profit. So when I, I think that's it.
Thank you for that. So moving on into teachers, you know, teachers are the number one most important factor in our schools for student learning. So data shows that fewer young people are pursuing education careers. And that approximately 50% of teachers leave Duval County Public Schools within the first five years. We also know that a diverse teaching workforce can improve outcomes for students. And our teacher workforce isn't as diverse as our student body. What can DCPS do to recruit and retain a high-quality and diverse teaching workforce?
Well, we have some, everything you've said is absolutely true. So we just recently approved a partnership or a program with UNF to help with, I think, not only teachers, but also school counselors, because that's a master's level position. And so training, and then there's a there's a stipend, and there's a commitment at the end of that. We have partnerships with non, some of our nonprofit partners like City Year, who have really cool student, or young adults embedded in the classroom, helping with a teacher, and many of them decide to become teachers or or paras within DCPS. We also have Read USA that we fund, which not only helps with our literacy scores, but also has, you know, one of the byproducts has been students are learning that they really like working and seeing a difference in students' lives, and some of them want to become teachers as a result of that. We have also our ParaPro or our Grow Your Own program that was a result of our legislative efforts. We have that launching this year where we're taking people who are already working in our schools, and if they have 60 credit hours in college, then can enter this program to grow your own. We partner with y'all, with JPEF, with the 1,000 by 26?
25.
25. Oh, I gave us an extra year on that. And and we have mentoring, we have support. Another legislative item that I'm pretty proud of, it was increasing the sort of the time for a new teacher to get all the coursework certifications in from three to five years, which gives us an opportunity to teach someone who's new to teach, and then they can go through all the process. So it gives them a little extra breathing room.
Okay. Thank you. And so moving forward, we see that according to the 2024 State of American Teacher Survey, teachers are two times more likely to report job-related stress and burnout compared to peers in other professions. Given that Duval and the county are facing a historic teacher shortage, what are your plans for improving the working conditions for teachers?
Thank you. One of the things that I've been hearing about recently goes back to discipline in the classroom and support for teachers in the classroom. I heard the term teacher abuse today. And so we need, that goes back to consistency, that we do need to do a better job supporting teachers, and that needs to be felt consistently from school to school, administration to administration. But that aside, we are offering mental health services for our teachers. We are offering professional development to our teachers. We are offering it in such a way that I'm, my understanding, and maybe the teachers in the room can tell me if this is working or not, but it's more collaborative and there's more ownership in the professional development. Anything that we can do to to bring the temperature down for the social war issues and community discussions where teachers are getting accused, or all teachers are being painted in in a light for the bad actions of some teachers, I think would be incredibly helpful, and I've I've tried to help with that at one of my schools. But then also, as a community, what we can do is appreciate our teachers. We can show appreciation for our teachers.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And the next couple of questions come to us from our partners at the Jacksonville Civic Council and NAACP. What's happening in Duval County Public Schools that you are proud of? And how do you think the school board and district should approach the task better conveying what's right with our public schools?
Well, I've mentioned it already tonight. I'm I'm pretty proud of the reading scores going up. I was pretty disappointed for our journalist friends in the room that the headline after that was announced was Duval County Schools Still Not Meeting State Standards. And I thought, well, it's true, but that doesn't tell the story that we are making progress. And could you just give us credit for the progress that we're making? And then mention that we're not where we need to be. I I fully own that, but that was disappointing to me. So I am excited for the progress that we're making. I think that we are seeing more students with different kinds of options too in high school. I talk a lot when I'm out talking about career and technical education. And one of the examples that I use is that at Douglas Anderson School of the Arts, we even have career and technical education. It's not exactly, it's not all what you think it is. We do have HVAC and welding and the trades. But we have ViStar in five or six of our schools. But at DA, there's journalism, there is photography, and there's an entrepreneur class that teaches students how to market themselves as artists, because they are their product. And so and then I hope the, I hope it's still there, that we're going to have a Business of Music program at DA. So there's some really cool things going on with career and technical education and options and opportunities for our students that I'm I'm done.
Thank you. And then the the next question here is, what are the two to three things that you would focus on that are holding us back from being as great as we can be?
Yeah. So I've said it before, but I think it's inconsistency. And under that inconsistency would be, like I said, our neighborhood schools that I think we can admit that not every family feels like they love their choices for their neighborhood schools for elementary, middle, and high school. And I think it's especially bad on the middle school level that we see families who are with us in elementary, and then they drop out and go take another choice option in middle school, and then many will come back in high school. So I think inconsistency, and that way I also mentioned the inconsistency in the discipline would make a huge difference in how people feel about their children being in their schools. It would make a difference in the learning environment. It would make a difference for our teachers as well. And then I also think another thing is is we need to do a better job of shouting our successes and telling our story, and I try to do that with my for-the-record section at the end of board meetings. Sometimes the public comment section can be pretty rough and negative, and so I have decided to use my time to talk about the good things that are going on, and I I reach out to principals and I reach out to people in the community and say, tell me what's going on at your school. Tell me anything good, because I will shout you out. Because I want people to know that, one, their board member's proud of them. And then, two, that there's some really cool things going on in Duval County Public Schools.
Oh, thank you. So now we are transitioning to questions from the audience. And we will start with our first one. It was announced recently that middle and high school students who live within two miles of their school will no longer be eligible for bus transportation. Although it's aligned with state legislation, Duval County is huge geographically. How will this impact attendance and absentee absenteeism rates?
That, remember when I said we had some tough decisions to make? We need to trim $119 million from our budget, not this coming school year, but the next coming school year. And so 85% of our budget is locked up in personnel. I don't think any of us want to cut any more teacher positions or cut in the personnel. I think we can agree that our our staff actually need to be paid more and would love to work towards that. So the next largest budget item is transportation. We are a huge county. All 67 counties in the state of Florida are underfunded in transportation. We have some special circumstances in Duval County in that we're one of two counties who contract out our transportation. And so And so we probably are paying a premium to contract that out. There's not a whole lot we can do immediately about that, but that's certainly something we need to start looking at. So this, going from the one and a half mile, which was the half mile courtesy to the two mile for high school students is one of those hard decisions, but we have to start making cuts somewhere. I was very firm that I would not tolerate that for elementary school students. I think two miles is too much to ask an elementary student to walk, bike, scooter, or a parent to do that as well. And so we kept it at the one and a half for elementary.
Thank you so much. The next question also comes to us from an audience member here in the room. My daughter was in Duval County Schools and we struggled to get teachers to follow her 504 plan and IEP. Florida State Community College has gone over and above with accommodations. How do we get our schools to better serve students with such challenges?
So I know a little bit about this, the 504, 504 plan. That to me seems like a school-based issue and it's talking about, goes back to the idea of inconsistency. Our experience with the 504 plan was, was good. And, and it's, and that 504 plan will follow you all the way to college and it's still, it's still running, it's still working well. So to me, that seems like a school-based, school leadership issue. If you, I tell people, if you're not getting anywhere with your school, please reach out to me. I can elevate that issue. I can also work with the principals and the leadership at the school, but that, that really sounds like a school-based issue and speaks to that inconsistency that I was talking about.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience is with literacy being a main concern for the district, what would you like to do to support media specialists in schools? Because the research shows that reading scores improve when they are full-time, when there are full-time media specialists in funded school libraries.
Awesome. So I have a Bachelor's of Arts in English Literature. So whoever asks this question is speaking my language. So we have, again, part of the tough discussion of our closure and consolidation is that we do have some schools who are, there's a mark, I don't know what the number is, I'm sorry, but there's a mark that if you're below a certain number of students, you have shared resource. And, and those jobs are more difficult to hire for because that means a teacher or a media specialist is at one school one week, another school, another week. It's a traveling position. And I have schools in my district that, that have gone without resource because they couldn't find the split. So that is something we, as we look at budget and as we look at getting our budget in a healthier position, we need to look at where we draw that line and what services we can provide with the, with the budget that we have. I don't know that we can address it until our expenses are in line with our revenue and we're in a healthier place. But that would be one of the considerations of consolidating schools. And that has been presented as a pro for consolidating schools is that if you have a larger, if you combine two smaller schools, have a larger number, then you reach that benchmark and you can have the full-time specialist. As far as the funding for, I, I know that we have very few, if maybe not any, on the middle school and high school level. And that would be further discussion for that. And as far as funding for books goes, again, that's a line item in the budget that we need to look at more and that, that's something I can dig into. I don't know what our budget is for that, but that's definitely something I can dig into.
Awesome. Thank you. How does DCPS coordinate with early learning centers and organizations to help ensure children enter kindergarten ready to learn?
So Duval County Public Schools operates pre-K in our schools where we can fund it because pre-K is not funded the same as K-12. And that has been a huge legislative item for me. I would love to see pre-K funded the same as K-12, which means that we would get FTE, we would get the same kind of funding for our pre-K students that we get for our, our K-12 students. And also it means that our pre-K teachers would also be enrolled in the Florida Retirement System. So that's, that's definitely a goal of mine. It's been in our legislative agenda, but how we coordinate is through our office, our chief of school, no, our chief academic officer is the person who coordinates. We have within that, the early childhood division, I sit, I'm sorry to keep saying this, but I, I do sit and work with folks in the pre-K space as well to make sure that we do have a system of high-quality, reliable, full-time pre-K for any family who wants it. And that should be a goal for us. And I know that there are many people who are working in this space and have been working in it long before I started, I clued into it.
Thank you. And before we get to the next question, we do have our staffers around the room getting ready to pass you around a QR code to take a survey of tonight's form. So if you could please take that form, take a picture of that QR code and fill out the form before, fill out the survey before you leave, that would be great. It helps us get great feedback input as we continue to do these forms throughout the four districts that are up for election this year. So moving on to the next question. As a leader in the Jewish community, I am interested in your actions and plans to ensure our Jewish students attend school in the most inclusive atmospheres. Your thoughts?
Well, the first place that we can thought, that we can start with that is to look at the calendar and make sure that we're not scheduling school events on Jewish holidays. And we did have an issue with that this year at one of our schools and, and it has been remedied. But that is the first thing that we can do is to make sure that we are observing the calendar and respecting students' availability in relation to their holidays. But as far as other things that we can do is we now have mandatory Holocaust history instruction. And I've worked with a partner, Morse Center, to be a pilot, to make Duval County a pilot for that instruction. And so we are kind of leading in that area as well. And then I think communicating respect for all people and making sure that that is something that we're talking to our own students about, but that we have a culture of mutual respect of all people in our schools. And that we don't tolerate bullying for any group.
Thank you. Another question from the audience. One prevalent issue to students in elementary through high schools is discussions of banning books and curriculum. How should these conditions, or excuse me, should these conditions grow more extreme? How would you approach the issue? It's a question that was raised.
Okay. So we actually have a board policy that's been on the books for quite a long time that if you, a parent, and I believe a community member could do this as well, has an issue with a book, then we have a process for challenging that book. And, and it may be that you're challenging that the book should not be, it could be at the grade level, it could be content-related, but we have a process for that. And so that would be, that would be my advice is to continue with the process. We have had situations where groups have come to our board meetings to read objectionable passages in, in our board meetings. I think kind of presenting as though they were left no other choice but then to do that. And, and to me, that's the nuclear option. As a board member, I would much rather you bring that to my attention and let me deal with it. I can steer you towards the process for challenging a book, but to come to a, a meeting and one, present it as this is what you have to do, and two, to read things that you find vulgar and offensive out loud in a public meeting where there may be scout, we have boy scouts in our meetings, girl scouts in our meetings, students in our meetings who make presentations. We have parents who are listening to our meetings probably while they're cooking dinner with their children in the background. And so we can, we can have advocacy, but we can do it in a way that is respectful and that follows the rules.
Thank you for that. Okay. So our next question from the audience is why does the school board keep approving new charter schools when we know that they are responsible for some funding being taken away from traditional public schools?
Because we really don't have a choice is the answer. If we were to, my understanding is that if we were to decline a charter that checks all the boxes, then that charter could go through an appeals process, the state would approve, then when we would be in an adversarial relationship with that charter and down the road, if they did not check boxes that needed to be checked and we wanted to work towards declining a renewal, then we would, we would not be in a strong position because we would have been in an adversarial relationship with them.
Thank you. What do you plan to do about the situation at Douglas Anderson is the next question for the audience, from the audience with past incidences that involve teachers who were removed from the classroom?
So many things have, we've been doing a lot. I just don't know that you've seen all, all that we've been doing. So the board hired an investigator, a law firm to do an investigation to see where, where we, where the weaknesses were, what went wrong. We have received the results of that. And then Dr. Krisner, before she moved back to being our deputy superintendent, made some policy changes or some procedure changes. As a board, we have looked at some policy changes. And so I can't remember if we voted on those at the last meeting or if we looked at them at the workshop and we're going to vote on them at the next meeting. But very recently, policy changes. We want our students to be safe, there's no doubt. And the thing is, good teachers who are doing their jobs, they want students to be safe and they want what I call the creepy teachers to be taken care of and to be removed from the classroom. And so, but we have some things with training on reporting, some, to make it very, very clear what everyone's responsibility is. We also have done some public information campaigns with our Title IX, but I can't remember the name of it, but so that students can make an anonymous report or a confidential report in case they don't want to go through someone in their school building, there's a way for teach, for students to report harassment as well so that it can be addressed.
Right. Thank you. So the next question from the audience is how are food insecurity issues work into the strategic plan?
That is a good question. And if I were to open up strategic plan, I'm not sure that I would find the words food insecurity. I think that would fall into some of the root causes of some of the other things that we see. We definitely have, we participate in the federal school lunch program. We have breakfast available, we have lunch available, and through some of our after-school partners, we even have dinner available. We have some tremendous community partners who do programs like Blessings in a Backpack where they send food home over the weekend. I have co-sponsored with Feeding Northeast Florida, food giveaways at some of my schools, most recently at Inglewood High School, but have also done another one that was at Crossridge Church, the first year I think I was on board. So working with community partners. And then also we have full-service schools and they have full, they have food pantries and there, again, there's one that serves the Inglewood community, I know for sure. So working with our community partners to make sure, our teachers are incredibly generous. And I know that there are teachers who have snacks in their classrooms because if a student comes to school hungry, they want that student to have something. And if you ever wanted to donate something, you could go to your local school and ask if there's a teacher has a snack closet that needs some extra snacks.
Thank you. If you're re-elected, how do you think the board can improve their efforts to engage the community?
I feel like I have been pretty engaged with the community. What can the board do? So show up more when we're invited. I am planning to, I did this the first year, I think that I was, we had a chat with the soup that I did with Dr. Green, Soup being Superintendent. And I co-hosted that at Sanderwood High School with the board member from District One and District Two because we overlap. And we took parent questions and we had Dr. Green there. I hosted one at Inglewood Elementary and made sure that we had translators at that one in three languages and we had rooms there. So I think the more that we can have community meetings, I've heard from some folks in Mandarin that they're concerned because I've, I've now acquired part of, part of Mandarin as my district. And they're a little confused about how their board member could be representing District Three, or they could be in District Three, but all their schools are in District Seven. So I've talked to them about co-hosting something with the board member for District Seven. So where we have overlap, people have access to kind of both of the board members, the one that represents their house and the one that represents their school. Yeah, I'll stop there.
Once again, a question from the audience. Three more, three more, three more. We'll, we'll give you a moment to take a break, take a water break if you need to. All right. So defining restorative practices as experimental techniques designed to reduce retaliation and resentment. Can you give us examples of how you've used these techniques in your daily life?
Actually, yes. Because we used a child-raising method in our home with our children that very much, now this was Christian-based, but so if that offends you, just kind of overlook that part because it still applies. That talks about the offense, the consequence of that offense, and then restoring the relationship. And so we, we, we use that very much in our home that this, this thing that you have done is an offense and it's an offense towards your sister or your brother or towards mom and dad and, or towards your playmate or whoever. And, and this is the consequence of that. But we want to extend, we want to ask for forgiveness to restore the relationship and we want to extend forgiveness. And that's one of the things that I think is missing in our schools is that our, our children, our students don't come to us with the skill of being able to understand, understand an offense, understand the consequences of that and accept the consequences of that offense and then reconcile with the person who's, they've offended or who has been offended to ask for forgiveness and then to extend forgiveness. And I think that's something that we see in our community as sorely needed. And in, in order to break the cycle of retaliation, which is what a lot of the gun violence seems to be, our students need that. I think a lot of our adults need that as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Second to last question. What do you think, or do you think, excuse me, do you think school staffers and teachers should be armed?
So we have school resource officers on our campuses and, and they are armed. And we have, we have used through the Guardian Program, we contract with a security company as well to, to make up the difference. We are constantly recruiting, if anyone wants to be a school resource officer, we are constantly recruiting for the DCPS Police Department, but we currently don't have enough. And so we contract out. I am not in favor of arming teachers or principals. I want them to focus on teaching and administering the school and especially if there's a crisis. Some of the questions, I, I have logistical questions about how this would work. So if you were a teacher who volunteered to be armed, to go through the training and be armed and, and an incident happens and you leave, who's with your students? And, and so I have that question. If you are the, the principal, you still, you have a job when there is a crisis. And, and so who is doing your job? And so I would, I would prefer to keep teachers and administrators doing their roles during the crisis and, and let our SROs and then our partners with JSO and JFRD come in and handle the situation. I have, like I told you, I show up to things. I've been invited both to a school shooter simulation and also to the reunification simulation. And so I've, I've seen the simulations of those and those really reinforced to me that I do not think it would be a good idea to have teachers or administrators armed in our schools. reinforce to me that I do not think it would be a good idea to have teachers or administrators armed in our schools.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So for our last audience question, what does parental rights mean to you?
So what it means to me is you have the, the responsibility and the opportunity to direct your children's upbringing and education. And I add that as not only the opportunity, but also the responsibility. Because I think it is difficult to talk about rights without talking about responsibilities. There is a, a law that outlines what those are. And we have voted those into board policy. And so the Florida definition and every subpoint of it is in our board policy.
Thank you, thank you. So now that we've reached the end of our Q and A.
Thank you all for your questions.
Yes, thank you for your questions. Now we move on to closing remarks. So you have another two minutes.
Well, thank you. I, I don't know why y'all haven't left, but thank you for being here. And I, I want to start with kind of, I have a dream, not to sound like Rapunzel or Martin Luther King. It almost seems wrong to put those two in a sentence together, but I do have a dream and, and I was thinking about this. So I would love to see a point where someone says, I moved to Jacksonville or I moved to Duval County for the schools. Because how many times have you heard someone say that about our neighboring counties? Well, I moved to so-and-so for the schools. And so I would love to see a point where people are talking about moving to Jacksonville for the schools. I would love to see a point where Realtors, and I've been endorsed by the Realtors, but where our, where Realtors are saying, oh yeah, here's, you know, any neighborhood's fine because you're going to have a good option of neighborhood public schools, no matter which neighborhood. You don't have to figure out the magnet system or the lottery. That's kind of an extra for you. But yeah, you can move anywhere in Jacksonville and you can have good options. I would love to see a point where the Chamber of Commerce is coming to us saying, hey, because of DCPS and your excellent system of public schools, we were able to attract these Fortune 500 companies. And oh, by the way, they want to invest in these schools and these. And so it's just that kind of thing where as Jacksonville grows, and I do feel like we're right on the edge of something exciting in Jacksonville. Duval County Public Schools is a really important part of that. And I want to see a, a place. So that's kind of my vision. I, I feel like it's, it's a good, I don't know when, I don't know when it's going to happen. But I do believe that it can happen and I believe that it's something we ought to be working towards.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So on behalf of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund, we would like to say thank you all. Thank the candidates for showing, for participating in this important community forum tonight. We want to thank all the attendees who logged on online. And we want to remind you of the importance of voting during this election. Just to remind you of some important election dates. Early voting is August 5th through 18th, through the 18th. And the deadline to request vote-by-mail ballots are August 8th by 5:00 PM. The deadline to return your vote-by-mail ballot is August 20th by 7:00 PM. And election day is Tuesday, August 20th, and you can vote between the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We also want to let you all know about our other three forums that are following this forum on today. And we encourage you, as you've heard some questions today, it's not only about one district, we are one district altogether. So please support and hear the other candidates as they run to vote so, so you can impact others and give information to others about voting in your best interest and your communities. So on Thursday, July 25th, which is this Thursday, there will be District One Forum at the Citadel Church and that's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. On next Tuesday, it will be the District Five Candidate Forum and that will be held at Edward Waters University in the Milner Auditorium. That'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And then District Seven's forum will be August 1st at Hopewell Church and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM as well. And you can find all of those registration dates and register online at jaxpeth.org/vote. So once again, we want you to make sure you fill out those surveys that are passed out to you. And we wish you have a great night and thank you once again for joining us on this evening.